I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. For all who wish, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Betty Stephanie, Commissioner Studley is absent and Student Rep Holden Champagne is absent as well. And Mary Beth will be here shortly, but she's... Okay. I'd like to read some board norms for our conversation tonight. And they begin with debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and our schools, not politics. So, thank you. And I have a couple of items to add to the agenda tonight. If I could have a motion to add an executive session at the end of the meeting, please?
So moved.
What's the purpose of it?
It's to discuss the possible, possible civil litigation to which the school district might be a party to. So I had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They have the motion carries. And then I need another motion to add addendum, an addendum to Personnel Memorandum Number 642, which everyone should have. And that's to add to the consent agenda.
Uh huh.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now I need a motion to pass the consent agenda.
All moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And do we have anyone for public input? Please note, no one for public input. And moving on to school program updates. Lauren?
So last month, RIS held an assembly focused on honesty and integrity. Who better to present to our student body than journalist Nina Keck from Vermont Public Radio? There was some role reversal when Ms. Keck was the one having to answer questions from our very own students. Our sixth grade students joined RMS seventh grade and participated in a moving presentation on understanding safety associated with social media use. RIS is hosting a Show Your Work night on May 16th from 6:00 to 6:45. All are invited to come and walk through our building to see some of the impressive work our students have been working on. Northwest School was excited to have illustrator author Sarah Dillard join us. She shared the wonderful information to all of our students in kindergarten through second grade and shared her wonderful illustrations. We would like to acknowledge our staff for Teacher Appreciation Week. We are thankful to have such a dedicated group of individuals here in Rutland State. Please join Northeast, Northwest, and RIS in the Color Run on May 13th. This is a wonderful community event. Call any one of the schools for more information. Northeast had a pause assembly recognizing and celebrating students who have been positive role models and leaders. During May, the character theme and social skills lessons focus on doing the right thing even when no one is looking. May is a fun-filled month at Northeast School. On May 3rd, kindergarten students performed a fabulous concert. Saturday, May 13th, we will be joining other Rutland schools for the Color Run. And finally, May 23rd, we will be having a picnic with a book. We are looking forward to so many fun-filled learning days ahead.
Thank you. So Holden isn't here, so we'll ask him for an update next, next meeting. Glenn Scott has a report on summer building and grounds, on the Summer Buildings and Grounds Work Plan.
Evening, everyone. All right, just wanted to give you a update regarding our summer work plan, essentially commencing June 19th, which will be Monday. Got a lot of exciting projects lined up this summer. I said last year was probably our busiest summer. This year might be equally, if not more busy in terms of everything we've got planned because we have our normal local funding and plan. But also we have our ESSR funding, which brings a lot of good improvements to our schools. That's very exciting, so we'll get that kicked off. But... But in terms of the workload this summer, it breaks down into five categories. So essentially, we're talking about all the other things we'd normally do, including summer transportation. So we've got a lot of tapestry programs, tutoring, early ed, busing. So basically, we have seven to eight runs of transportation to do each day. So we'll have those for our bus drivers. Once they get off the bus, they'll jump into our other things, such as general maintenance and painting, which we do throughout the summer. So we'll get a lot of painting done in classrooms, a lot of general maintenance and repairing the things that sort of break throughout the year that we haven't made it or gotten to. Lawn and grounds care, as you know, is completed by our bus drivers and maintenance staff. So they'll continue to keep up with the maintenance of the grass and the trimming. We're a little behind already because of the wet last few weeks. So we're going to try to spend the next few weeks getting caught up before we head into the next busy summer months. And then our custodians do an amazing job all throughout the summer. It's their busiest time as well because basically the teachers are gone. So they're doing a lot of floor care, a lot of detailed cleaning. And then, as we will talk about it, intermediate school. Anywhere where we're doing flooring, our custodians are responsible for moving out all of the boxes and tables and desks and everything out of the classroom. So in addition to the cleaning, they're a huge support and do an amazing job throughout the summer to help us move and stay ahead of the floor care team as they push their way through the buildings. But to kick off the building projects, basically, we have two roofing projects this summer. The first one will be at Northeast Primary School. This is 12,000 square feet. This was due to the storm damage, which we experienced back in December of 2022. So it's funded by an insurance claim. Vermont Roofing was awarded this work. And they, we don't have a time schedule yet on this, but they're usually pretty good about getting us in. And that's probably about a two-week project to get that done. The second roof will be at Northwest School. This is the roof that covers the gym. This roof is well past its life because a lot of it's, the roof is kind of shrinking. It's pulling off the brickwork, so this will be a, is a much-needed roof that we need to get done. This is about 4,500, 4,500 square feet. So there'll be some insulation repairs there that need to be done once it's torn off. And also Vermont Roofing was awarded that project as well. And we don't know the schedule yet for that. Intermediate School, so as we talked about the floor replacement, this is all ESSR-funded. We have 24 total classrooms, which will be completed this summer. That's a lot of classrooms and a lot of moving. It's an older building, so there's also a lot of floor prep. You know, on older buildings, you pull that carpet up, you don't know exactly what you're dealing with under there. So there might be some additional prep. But again, the custodial staff will move and try to stay ahead. We'll have two crews with Carpet Warehouse will be working on that. They've done an amazing job through winter, February and April break. So we got a good jump on some of those rooms already. Also at the intermediate school, as we've shared, one of the most exciting projects across the district in a long time is the renovation of our intermediate school auditorium. We've already been able to get the auditorium painted. If you haven't seen it, stop in. And it's just good to, it'll be cool to see it before, in person of this because the colors are amazing. It looks great. And then the next two steps, or next three steps, I should say, will be the remediation of our, the asbestos-containing material that's in the mastig and flooring. So that'll start immediately after students are gone, June 19th. Once that's done, which we expect that to take three to four weeks, July 17th, the flooring install will begin. We don't know how that's going to look once the floors, once the materials removed. We may need to do some prep work or some subfloor work. So we've got a little bit of a window built in there before flooring starts. But potentially, July 17th would be the beginning of flooring. And then August 7th is our tentative date for seating installation. So you can see it's a pretty tight window, but we really feel comfortable. We will have this whole project completed by the time school sets in, and it'll be a really amazing space. In addition to that, and I didn't put that in there, but we were able to fund new curtains and blinds out of this in addition to. So you can't finish the space and not do all the details. So we have, it'll be really nice, nice space. Also at the intermediate school, we've been talking about this a while. I've had some trouble trying to find a mason to tackle these, these bricks, which are deteriorating on the library and church street side of the entrance of intermediate school. We do have somebody lined up. They're potentially starting at, at the very beginning of June. We're going to let, allow them to work, but hopefully it won't interrupt. We don't plan on, we don't anticipate it interrupting any school. So we might have to close one side of the steps. But that's a really, really delicate project because there's just a lot of bricks there and it's just in really bad shape. So we'll be working on that from probably about three weeks, beginning of June through the third week in June. So... At the middle school, so we've finished the flooring replacement in the banner room, as you can see in that photo. But we weren't able to tackle the painting. So at the middle school this summer, we have a lot of painting that needs to be done. We'll have a painting crew, which our drivers will also go through there. We'll get the banner room painted, and then we'll do, do three or four classrooms to make it through that building because there's just been multi-generations of painting that's been done, but not much at the same time. So we need to get that building, it'll be caught up after the summer, hopefully. And then Classroom 112 and then two of the lobbies will have a flooring replacement project done as well. We just finished the library this past week, which looks amazing. We were able to get the carpet done and the new flooring installed in that in about a week and a half. So we're well ahead of schedule on that one. So high school and Stafford, excuse me, one second. So we've got a lot of projects going on at Stafford and high school. The biggest one is the pavement replacement project. So if you've been through the driveway lately, there's some asphalt on the left that's deteriorating as you go around the corner down to where the visitor parking is and then down into the Stafford Circle. There's a lot of pavement that's past its life and so we've got potholes and sort of the cracking that's developing. So we've got about 39,000 square feet of pavement in three areas. Wilk paving was awarded that contract. We don't have a date for doing that, but we'll certainly work with Steve and Greg at the high school and Melissa so that we can do this and get it done this summer before and not interrupt any schooling projects. Also at the high school, we're going to do a renovation to the first floor, front and back restrooms. So those partitions need to be replaced. There's just been, I think there's, I don't, I think there might be the original, there are the original partitions. They've got years' worth of graffiti, lots of scratches. So they've been pretty banged up. So we're going to replace those this summer. But once we remove the old, we'll paint and then we'll put the new ones in. So that'll be the front restrooms and the back restrooms. And then 210 in Video Communications at Stafford, we have a floor plan redesign. Basically, there's a lot of walls and the classroom's kind of choppy. So we're going to knock down a couple of walls and move the sound booth forward. This is something that Melissa had requested a couple of years ago. But we're going to do that in-house and hopefully have that done, probably within four weeks. We had held off doing flooring last year because of this project that was already funded by ESSR. So we held off last year. We're going to do that in timing in conjunction with that renovation this summer. So that'll be a very exciting project for the students in Video Communications as well. And then just closing out, ESSR, our two biggest ESSR projects. ESSR Phase One continues, which was the testing and assessment of our building automation system. That's going well. The Thomas and Associates was, made it through high school in Stafford, and they're working their way through the rest of the buildings. And they hopefully will have that wrapped up by the end of June or middle of July. Phase Two A and Phase Two B, we're basically in planning phases. As you just approved in the consent agenda tonight, Phase Two B was included in that. So that includes a lot of our biggest work. We don't anticipate that we'll get a whole lot of that done this summer. Potentially, the boiler at Pier Point, which is in Phase Two A, and then some heat pumps and some rooftop unit at Stafford, which is in Two A. But Phase Two B, we're really not sure if we'll be able to get that stuff, the planning done, and then the equipment order because of the long lead time. So we'll just say, we'll just stick with the fact that the planning is underway and hopefully we'll get some of that stuff done. And then closing out, the last ESSR-funded project, outdoor classrooms, were, last month, the board approved that proposal. Russell Construction was awarded that project. But we're now waiting for AOE approval on two of the five. So we've got approval for three. We've got two more that we're waiting for Agency of Education approval. We anticipate if, you know, maybe the next week we get approval for the last two, we'll get a contract signed in the following week. We anticipate that if, if all comes together, we could possibly start some construction on a few of those sometime in July. The work on those would probably start in July, but we would plan it so that we might continue into the school year based on not interrupting any school activities or the playground areas. One, a good place to do that would be like at the middle school, where we're going to be putting a new pad and learning pad in behind the school. We could be working on that and not interrupt the school day. Whereas at the Northwest School, you know, we're working on a pad down in the lower area. We would, we would most likely not want to be working on that while school's in session because that's kind of the open play area there. So those are the five very exciting projects. It'll really change the face of the grounds at those areas and be a great place for, a great additions to the schools. So that's all I have for this evening. Does everyone have any questions on any of that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that hard work.
Very ambitious.
Very exciting.
Really busy.
It is very exciting.
You should probably be able to squeeze in a couple more projects. Little things.
I'm going to turn around and look at these principals and they're going to go say, yeah.
Okay, next we have Ted Plomenas and our update on the annual audit report.
Now, all of those projects that we're doing is definitely keeping the business office quite busy. So thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you. I just thought it would be helpful to give another periodic update on how our audits are progressing. As you might recall, we have two ongoing financial statements audits. I'm glad to be able to say that we have a first draft of the financial statements audits for fiscal 2021. That should have been completed earlier, but we at least now have the draft and we expect it to be completed this month pending some further input that the business office needs to provide. The audit has identified a controls issue that did exist during 2021, one that, which we began working on in fact last year, and one which led the business office to hire an additional staff member this past March. I'll just briefly read a couple of the comments that are in the draft, just so that you can get a feeling for this. And then we'll have subsequent reviews that get into further detail. The finding as currently drafted is that upon review of the internal controls of the Rutland City Public Schools, it was noted that there was an inadequate segregation of duties, segregation of duties in the business office for processing accounts receivable, cash, preparation and review of journal entries, and preparation of bank reconciliations. The principle of segregation of duties is an important control practice so that no one person can basically control all aspects of a transaction. That obviously helps to prevent fraud and other issues. There's been no evidence, by the way, that has been found to indicate that we've had such issues. But again, an important control practice is to say, well, if I am going to prepare a reconciliation or analysis, then I won't be the one to approve it. Perhaps I'll hand it over to Sarah and she'll independently review that. But because of the volume of work and the limited number of people that we've had, it's been difficult to create all that segregation as needed. But we've recognized that as business transactions and volumes have grown, that is something that we needed to do. And we acted upon it in March by hiring Tracy Smith as our accounting manager in addition to Tim Smith, no relation, who's joined us this month to help with, with these activities and many more. Just for your interest, the auditor noted a cause for the non-compliance. And again, it's currently drafted that cause is described as the turnover in qualifications of business office personnel led to a lack of adequate staffing for proper segregation of duties and timely performance of certain control procedures. This lack of staffing was observed by the previous auditor, O'Brien Shortle, as something for us to consider. We're very sensitive to adding people, and so we wanted to make sure that it was the right thing to do. Obviously, the audit is now confirming that the steps we took in the last few months were needed. Their recommendation, not surprisingly, for corrective action is, quote, "The school district should consider the need to hire additional qualified staff to allow for proper segregation of duties and timely performance of control procedures." And they're noting in this draft, by the way, in terms of the status of corrective action because of the steps that we've taken, currently they're pointing out that the corrective action has been taken. So when this audit is completed, when the report is finalized and certified by the auditors, we're going to make arrangements to invite the partner in charge, Mr. Rick Brigham, to speak directly with the finance committee and possibly the board, if you have that interest, so that at least the committee can hear his report directly. And committee members will have a chance to ask any questions that they wish to ask to make sure that the results, the independent audit results are not being filtered in any way. And of course, when we have that committee meeting, as always, all board members will be welcomed and encouraged to attend. So moving forward, our other outstanding audit is the, for the fiscal 22 financial statements. And the field work for that audit has also been underway, many parts of it concurrent with the 21 audit. But that's now picking up pace because with the conclusion of tax season, the auditors have more time for us. And now that our business office staffing is back to complement, we're now able to accelerate our efforts in wrapping that up as we expect to do by the end of June. At that point, the district will be caught up, finally, with our outstanding audit requirements, and we'll be back on, on schedule. Then in order to ensure that we remain on schedule, this summer, we're going to coordinate with Sullivan Powers, our new auditors, to develop a clear and a mutually agreed-upon schedule for conducting the next audit of our fiscal 2023 financials. As you might know, the current fiscal year closes on June 30. And then for several months after that, we finalize the statements and then work with the auditor. My goal is to work out a schedule with Sullivan Powers so that we can have the fiscal 23 audit closed out and certified by the end of this calendar year, even though the deadline isn't until March of 2024. So we're in the process of catching up. We've implemented some corrective actions. We still have some additional corrective actions to make now that we have our staffing. We're in the process of prioritizing and rationalizing some of the procedures, updating and upgrading some of them as we're going along. As you can appreciate, that takes time, but we're doing them on a priority basis. And I'm very confident that with the outstanding two staff members that we've added in the last couple of months, this positions us really well to strengthen the, the business office, not only to keep up with all of the ESSR volume, but to be very well positioned going forward. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions or entertain any suggestions and comments. All right, well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate your support.
Thank you so much. And next we have the Allen Street Campus Report.
I want to be the one that's the most on TV.
Good goal to have.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of being able to introduce our presenters this evening. First, you can hear from an eighth grader, Danielia Linkin. And then you can hear from a fifth grader, Ann Bella Laster. And Rashlee Gabe's going to close the show. He is also an eighth grader at Allen Street Campus.
These two stinky boys next to me.
Thank you for the warm introduction and giving us the opportunity to share our progress. But you cannot mistake the board, administration, staff, parents, and community members for the support and encouragement that we have received. The students are the stars tonight, and they created a great presentation for you. So without further ado...
Being at A A S C means a lot to me. I wasn't sure at first because I didn't want to start a new school or leave my friends. Right from the jump, I just, I was greeted at the front of the door with a big smile from Kevin, and I felt completely safe. Before attending A A S C, my struggles were not listening and engaging in my schoolwork. Today, I'm on a different path. I'm more physical, engaged in my learning, and more open about my concerns and needs. This year, I have built new relationships, created connections, and became part of a team. When my mom saw my last report card, she said, "That's what I'm talking about." I was really proud, I was really proud of myself. This new path is exciting for me and my family. To top it off, I just had my first job interview today, and I killed it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We all have great peer and staff encouragement when trying new things. If it's biking, skateboarding, rock climbing, skiing, or even snowboarding. We have built confidence by trying new things. A year ago, I was no, 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 no to anything new. Now I am, well, I'll give it a try.
The staff makes the building a safe and loving place for all. Not only have I learned a ton of academics this year, but I've also become a better friend and learned to swim and skateboard. I really love coming to school every day so much, I drag my feet at the building while Scott tells me to leave in a funny way. Honestly, I never want to leave.
Very nice.
Every day, we have the opportunity to improve in many different areas. At Allen Street Campus, we work hard on self-improvement, regulation, teamwork, consistency, engaging in academics, completing projects, demonstrating patience, uplifting our teammates, and becoming kind and respectful to all. When we meet the school's expectations, we earn the opportunity to get off campus to participate in awesome experiences in our community. My favorite place is to shred up Killington with peers and staff.
At A A S C, my class incorporates academics with hands-on learning. This year, I was selected to be on the planning team for Portrait of Graduates. This was a great experience where I was able to collaborate with peers, staff, and community members. The funny thing was, A A S C was already incorporating a lot of the key components daily. So I kind of felt like an expert on the team. The purpose of P O G is that kids possess the essential skills when they graduate high school. For example, critical thinking and problem-solving skills are important for navigating life and reducing stress. We are always faced with problems, so developing skills will increase our success. Over the last few months, we have built compost bins, skateboard ramps, and plotted our pumpkin patch and fruit tree orchard. Before we head outside, cow drills measuring and estimating into our heads before we get our hands dirty. During these lessons, we are focused on communication, empathy, integrity, and collaboration. Our critical thinking and brainstorming were also challenged when we encountered hiccups in the process.
When I first came to Allen Street Campus, I stood on the pump track platform for two days, frozen in fear. I was encouraged by peers and teachers to try it. I fell on the first roller and didn't get on another bike for days. Now I can pump the whole track and clear the 10-foot jump. I also come after school to ride the track, and I ride around town with my uncle. Not only have my bike skills improved drastically this year, I also get to spend time with my family doing activities we love.
I was so excited to come to Allen Street this year from Pier Point. I love being outside, riding our bikes on the pump track, and swinging in the backyard of our school. Scott just shared Allen Street's new playground design with our class, and we can't wait for it. Scott just shared Allen Street's new playground design with our class, and we can't wait for it. I like that everyone works hard, cares, and is nice to each other. Miss Tara is sweet, understanding, and has like, has a lot, like a real lot, patience. I'm pretty sad about summer, and I wish we didn't have it. I can't wait to see what next year brings for everyone. Oh, yeah, and also, by the way, thank you for bringing us in our playground.
The entire staff trusted me before I had the chance to earn their trust. On day one, I mean, okay, maybe it was day three, I had access to tools, bikes, kitchen equipment, pump track, records, books, audio, video, and a way of technology.
That means you stay at
The plane goes straight.
It's the same altitude. Now, this is a rudder. Remember I told you how it's curved on top and the curve makes it fly? Well, this gives it more curve. You see how that, that, when we push it down, it curves more, and it makes it lift more. So this way, we're turning to the left.
One of our school goals is to build a culture of growth, equity, and kindness. Walk into our building, and you will definitely get that vibe. Our learning is both experiential and traditional, pen and paper. Experiential learning is the process of learning through experience and is defined as learning through reflection on doing. Our staff has created a safe environment that focuses on a growth mindset and improving our health. I must have earned Scott's respect and trust as he let me watch Gypsy. I wouldn't let anyone touch my dog.
Scott?
Hi.
So does your memory
Carples are this part of your hand, right?
Flarples, carples.
We always have access to our counselors during the school day, which is huge. Counselors will bring us to a comfortable spot, take us on a hike, and fish so we can talk about our feelings. Counselors have helped my class become more open, mentally stronger, and reflective.
That was it?
Oh, yes, sir.
You weren't just doing that.
Yes, sir.
Was remembering that?
Some people say we're competitive, but that's an understatement. We get the opportunity to overcome our challenges and push our limits in a friendly manner with our peers. I think A A S C is a safe and fun space that operates like a big, healthy family. I like being here. Yeah, I said it. A A S C takes my mind off things and gives me the opportunity to be a role model for the younger students, engage with community partners, and achieve my goals. Should I say that? We'll do it without the T and give it that Vermont accent. Every student, every day.
Thank you. We hope you enjoyed our presentation and all of our progress this year. We can't wait to show you what we learned next year.
Student at your desk with a camera. My name, and she was pointing at, I wash. We'd really like to thank everybody for your time tonight. They've done a wonderful job.
My dogs are showing.
I loved every minute of that. I loved every minute.
Very impressive.
Very impressive.
It's awesome.
Very good.
I do believe, I do believe the hair color might have changed on somebody on the panel.
I could respect that.
You did an amazing job. Well done.
Yes, very good job.
I mean, we like all the building updates, but this might be our favorite.
And I stay here forever. No one's watching.
Thank you very much. Well done. I'm not emotional. You're emotional.
I know.
Superintendent.
Follow that. Mic drop and go.
Start with a joke.
Make a motion to change the, change me in the general. Put me, put me at the bottom. All right, I'll be boring. I'm going to be boring. Well, I have some important dates to inform you of, because we, our board meeting in June, it's two days before graduation, so I want to make sure you know the dates that we have coming up. We have the Stafford Tech Awards Ceremony that is coming up actually before that board meeting on June 2nd. June 2nd at 12 noon. That's going to be in the RHS gym, if you're interested in coming to that. That's a fun event. And then graduation for the high school is on Thursday, June 15th. It starts at 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM, Steve, 6:00 PM. And it's at the Spartan Arena. And we, we'd love to have all the board there, and we have a special spot for you to sit. You get to walk in with all the faculty. It's fun. Right behind Lauren, right? Are you in the front?
Can you just say that again, the 15th?
Uh, June 15th, Thursday, Thursday night, yeah, at 6:00 PM. And if you'd like to go to the senior awards ceremony, that is always the day before. It's on Wednesday. That would be June 14th, and that starts at 6:00 as well. And that's at the high school in the gym in the high school on Stratton Road. So we'll remind you again.
Did you say that was just for seniors or?
Just senior awards, yep. The underclassmen awards is the Wednesday before that, 14th, that's the 7th, I think, right? And that's also at 6:00 PM.
What was on June 2nd? Can you say that? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I wrote the date down. I don't read what it was.
That's the Stafford Tech Awards.
Oh, Stafford Tech Award. Thank you.
So here's another date coming up. We, you know, you remember that we, over the colder months, were working, we just mentioned it, on our Portrait of a Graduate with Patel for Kids, that organization that helped us through that. We established a community vision for what we expect our students to become, or hope our students to become at the end of our 13 years with us. So that really was the first step for us to establish a vision to eventually get to a strategic plan. And that plan development is going to begin specifically in September. But before we do that, we have started a kind of a reflection process over the next few weeks. We're trying to consider, as a district, how we're serving all of our students and considering that all of our students are able to access our learning opportunities that we have for them. We're trying to reflect on that, if that's happening. We've engaged with a nonprofit organization called Successful Practices Network, S P N. They came as a recommendation from Patel, and they're helping us conduct an equity review. So we're going to be looking at three things. We're going to look at our practices and procedures and whether they are effectively, effectively serving our students. We're going to look at culture and climate and whether that fosters student success. And then we're going to consider the learning experiences that we have set up in the classrooms, or maybe not necessarily in classrooms, maybe outside, and whether that needs a shift at all to make sure that all students can access those learning experiences. So that's kind of our goal for this, this survey. We've already started by surveying parents and students and staff members. That, we had sent out a survey, well, this week and last Friday. And that will close at the end of the week. And then the next step after that is, we have a forum discussion that's going to talk about these topics. So here's the date. The date is next Wednesday, May 17th. Wednesday, May 17th. That is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and that's going to be in the Raulan High School Theater. May 17th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And it's going to look a little bit like when we had, if you were with us, with our Portrait of a Graduate design team. We've invited a pretty broad spectrum of the community to come to attend this, and we ask that all of you attend as well, if you're able. We're going to use the information that we gained from this forum, as well as the information from the surveys. And that's going to help us do the reflection process that we're, that S P N is helping us with. And that will combine that with some of the, we're going to look at some data on our, on our district, some student outcomes, behavior data, things like that. And that, we'll use that information to make some plans when we do the strategic planning. So we've got the vision, kind of get some student results, and then we're going to make a plan for where we go in the future. Okay, so any questions on that before I go on? I'll give you a quick hiring update. First of all, I want to thank all the administrators and the teams out there that are working really hard on trying to bring the best professionals that we can to the, to the district to serve our kids. This is a tough hiring climate, as you can imagine. You know, it's, it's like that everywhere in all sectors of the economy. And so they're working very hard to make sure we, we bring in some great people. Building by building, Central Office, Ted actually mentioned this. Our Central Office and Business Office positions are pretty much complete. Stafford, I think, is complete. Melissa's way back there. She'll tell me if I'm wrong. RHS, I think, is working on four openings, I believe. Allen Street has two special educator openings, I believe. Hope I'm right. RMS has a teaching, teaching opening and a school psychologist opening. At R A S, we have six teaching positions that we're working on filling. And Northeast and Northwest has a special educator and a counselor opening. So it's a really busy time of the year, right? While we're trying to get to the end of the year and get through all of this, that happens at the end of a school year, we're also working on hiring. So hopefully, we'll, we'll wrap up most of this by the next board meeting. So it's just busy times. I want to give a couple of thanks and a couple of commendations. A thank, thanks especially to, we started two weeks ago, the Vermont CAP State Assessment. That's the assessment that, that is new, that the whole state has to, all schools across the state have to follow. And we started, I think, in the second week that we were able to. So the first week that it started, it was very challenging across the state. Schools had a lot of troubles. And then when we started the high school, we, we ran into a lot of troubles. We couldn't get kids to log on to the tests. So it's a new test, whole new system, and, you know, they've had some bugs with it. And I think, right now, it seems like it's ironed out because we, we've gone into the tests this week and things seem to be working okay. But I wanted to thank Patricia Egner and the IT guys and Bianca McKean and the folks who dealt with trying to make sure we were able to get that test to work with, corresponding with the state. And then I especially want to thank the students who patiently dealt with that. You know, they came in ready to take a test on Tuesday morning, and the test wouldn't work. So that was, that was hard. Our kids were great, though. Everything I heard about, they just, they dealt with it, and they showed Portrait of a Graduate adaptability. They were, they were really good. So that was good to see. So I don't think we had any, I think we, were you around at all? You're a senior. You don't care about this.
Seniors don't have to take.
Yeah. But I think it went well today, from what I understand. Steve says yes. Steve's, Steve's almost a senior, too. So I think it's, I think it's going well. So it looks like it's okay. It's just, it's a new test. We have a new vendor, and it's, it's been a challenge for the A O E to try to work through that. I understand that that's, that's hard to do. Next year, we should be, should be better. I'm having no fears. I wanted to congratulate RMS. They had a great STEM fair. Was that last week? It's all blending together. They had a great STEM fair, first ever that they've done. And they had the seventh grade presenting and the eighth grade presenting, and they were all in halls presenting at the, at different tables, talking about the different research and experiments that they did. It was really, really good. It was great to see. Kids were fantastic. I was thinking about the Portrait of Graduate skills there. Communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. They were on it. And I talked to a few kids presented to me, and I thought, wow, this is, this is really complex and really, really challenging. It looked like high school level work, so I thought that was great. I wanted to thank RMS teachers, Ally Mac and Roxanne Johnson Delir, who helped organize that and put it together. So it'll be great to see that again next year, make it a tradition. And then last night, or not, not last night, Sunday night, the Vermont Chapter of the National Football Foundation had their 28th Annual Awards Banquet at Castleton. And they honored a number of different students across the state, and one of ours was honored, Eli Pauquette. He was an honoree from the National Football Foundation as a high school scholar athlete. That was a really nice award to be able to get. And they also honored our own coach, Norman. He received the award of Contribution to Amateur Athletics. That was really nice to see. So congrats to those two folks. And my last recognition goes to Lauren Salamato. Lauren Salamato. They don't even know what you're. Lauren was the Vermont winner for the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. She got the student scholarship award. And then, Lauren, you tell me if I'm right, I heard you also are the Section 1 winner, like the multi-state regional winner. Is that right?
Yeah, I'm not, I think it's like out of the northeasters.
Okay, okay.
That's all.
And, and then do you keep on going, possibly, possibly?
Yeah, they just like submit your application further and further.
Great. That's, that's really, really great. I, I understand it recognizes scholastic abilities, leadership, and sportsmanship of high school, high school student athletes. And so that's really, really impressive. So now we'll clap again. So that's it for now. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Studley is not with us, but fortunately, we had a very nice building and grounds report from Glenn Scott Earlier, so we can move on to finance and strategic planning with Mary Beth.
Great. Thanks, Kathy. We did begin our meeting, whatever that was. Last week? Sorry. Thought I was prepared. I'm not, uh, whenever we met last, we began the meeting, meeting Tim Smith, who was new in the, in the business office, which was nice to meet him. He's the new controller and started on May 1, and he has extensive experience in business and audit, and certainly does some volunteering for numerous civic activities. And as I think Bill mentioned, the business office is now at full tilt, which should certainly set us up for much success in the future, so. Then we had three main topics we covered. The first was talking about the upgrade to our financial accounting system, which we'd covered the meeting before as well, but really kind of looked to put that to bed. And we did so with the consent agenda today, where we approved the letter of recommendation about that initiative relating to the upgrade of the financial accounting system. Topic two was about the business office plans to explore further optimizing the district's use of printers and copiers. Currently, we spend about $75,000 annually to support a fleet of 40, of, in fact, more than 40 machines. New software features and more efficient machines might enable the district to actually reduce those costs by 10%. The district currently leases its machines from Camden under a five-year agreement through June of '25. So I think Ted was just giving us a heads up that that's coming our way soon to revisit that. And the last item was about the audit, which we got a full report on today, so I think that's it. Our next meeting is June 6th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM.
Thanks, Mary Beth. And Policy Committee, Kevin.
So, excuse me. Policy Committee met on April 25th. We reviewed a number of policies, approved the four listed in the agenda, a transportation policy, school bus safety policy, transportation of students by staff policy, and then a naming of school buildings policy for first reading. That was approved earlier tonight. The, there were a number of policies that we, that we want to look at for the, the next meeting, which will be on May 23rd. There's 5710 is, has to do with the district's responsibilities for, in regards to transportation of students.
for, um, in regards to transportation of students. There's also, um, another policy related to transportation and specialized equipment in and between schools that we wanted to talk with Pam Reed about. They will, will hopefully address that at our next meeting. And then a couple, um, related to some financial matters that we're hoping to get Ted to come to our next meeting. So we'll have a bunch of guest speakers at our next meeting. We'll also be discussing policies on communication, uh, which have come up recently. Those are in the 3,000, um...
Series?
Series? What, what do we call that? Series. Okay. So, uh, the next meeting on May 23rd has a bunch of interesting, uh, policies. If you're thinking about you want to come and watch a boring policy meeting, this is, this is the one. Does anybody have any questions?
We have a motion to move these policies to, for a second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have any unfinished business? I don't think so. Any new business? Any announcements?
Going once?
Going once, okay.
He jokes.
So, our next regular board meeting is on June 13th at 6:00 PM. Just as a reminder to everyone. And...
Maybe Lauren won another award.
Executive session now? Okay. So I entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of consideration of possible civil litigation to which the school district may be a party. The premature release of information regarding this subject, which would place the board at a substantial disadvantage. If we could please include Rob Liss, Ted Plamentis, and Bill Olson.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Many opposed? Motion passes.